Have your attention please. I'd like to call the words Wilmington City Council Regular Meeting, November 3rd, 2022. Could we have roll call please?
Jonathan McKay. Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Lierman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Eivlin.
Here.
Matt Kirkie.
Here.
Thank you. We are missing one council member. Please, please. Would we be excused? Second motion, second by Lierman, that we excuse him from council member. All favors in. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, excuse. Would you stand and join me in the pledge, please?
I plead the allegiance and fidelity of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join me in breaking up in silence. Thank you. All right, under my ten and nine, we have the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
Will be approved as presented?
Second motion by Osburn, second by Perd to approve the agenda as presented. All favors in. I'm saying aye. Any opposed? Agenda is accepted. You also have before you the minutes of the October 20th special council meeting. What is your pleasure? Will be accepted and presented?
Second.
Motion second to accept the minutes of the October 20th special meeting. All favors in. Aye. So accepted. You also have the minutes of the October 20th regular council meeting. What's your question? Will be accepted and presented?
Second.
Motion second to accept the October 20th regular council meeting as permitted. All favors in. I'm saying aye. Aye. On my agenda, we have the third reading of Resolution 2245, appointing Josh Ingles, city's representative for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Could I have someone do the third reading?
Sure.
I'll move for the third reading of Resolution 2245 by title only.
Second. Yes, I'm sorry, what?
Discussion?
Oh, yeah, so if we have a second. Second. Okay, we have a motion by Perd, second by Albright. Discussion?
This may be somewhat of a lost cause perhaps from my perspective, but somebody told me one time, politics, the first thing if he knows how to count, and I think I'm pretty well outnumbered tonight, in my opinion, but I've done some research because some of this goes back, I actually told him I was mayor. CBB was first founded back in 97 and Convention and Visitors Bureau is a corporation incorporated by the state of Ohio. And so it does have bylaws, it has legal standing on its own. Their bylaws were first passed, I believe, in, they were adopted in 97, they were amended in 2000, they were amended in 2001, they were amended in 2003. But the 2003 amendment, actually it was expand the board to 10 members from nine previously and at that point in time, while you have a board with 10 members, I don't know if you move five to five, what happens? And it's kind of going, we're probably going to be in, I guess, if we go ahead and pass this thing. My, and again, I want to say, everybody that, my objection here is not to Mr. Ingles. He's obviously a very well qualified candidate, he spoke to us with his qualifications. My gripe is with the procedure. In the bylaws of a corporation state of Ohio, it says very clearly, appointing the board trustees shall initially be nominated by the task force assigned by joint meeting of city council, county commissioners, approved by city council and county commissioners. Upon such terms, the seat on the board becomes vacant, members of the board of trustees, that is the Convention and Visitors Board, will generate names of potential new members and submit to city council and the county commissioners for approval. That's what it says. And I just happen to be a person who believes that if you got a, if you got a plan, you got a bylaws, maybe you ought to either abide by them or change them. Will we go from here? I don't know, because if the commissioners turn it down, then where does this stay? There's a lot of questions to be.
Okay, and I guess then my question would be, okay, just to bring it to closure, how did this name get recommended and taken before the commissioners if we weren't involved in the process? That's ambiguous.
Nick, do you mind if I borrow that first section? Yeah. I'm looking, and I have not seen the entirety of the bylaws, but on the very first page, section two, I see a breakdown number and tenure of board members. Two of them must come from the lodging industry, one must represent an attraction, two members are at large. I know the board doesn't fulfill these requirements. So there's plenty that needs to be addressed in the bylaws. What we've said, what I've said about this all along is, the way that this has gone on my time on council is that the mayor brought the point of two, we passed along, and I didn't know this, but I guess the commissioners have approved it from there. So if that needs to change, by all means, but I don't want the organization to run short of board member in the interim. And this is a, is this a 14 month, Mr. Mayor, is this a 14 month?
Yeah, it's a short term.
It's the remainder of the term, so I think that gives them time to figure out what they want to do. They can, you know, that seat will be up for nomination, depending on how they want to write this.
If with a recommendation, maybe they need to revisit their bylaws.
By all means.
To go with, to break under.
But as our law director said, that's not for us to have to interpret, right, like just what it is, so.
Ultimately, it'll be Matt Borse determining whether they feel the bylaws have not been applied.
Yeah.
Discussion, sir?
Mr. President.
Do you want to come forward and name an address?
Joshua Ingles, Mr. President, I may have two pieces of information that may be helpful to the council.
Address.
Oh, 685 Timberlake in Long Island, New York. Two pieces of information that may be helpful. First is I've had some conversations, in particular with the executive director of the Visitors Bureau, board president, the last conversation I had with the executive director indicated that they would, if council approves this, welcome you with open arms and therefore I don't anticipate any problems in terms of the outreach of the board. Second thing is I did have a link that a council member in the case, I'll hear today, comes in with him, and I'll share with the rest of the board what I told him, which is that this is approved. One of the first things I will urge the board to do is appoint a committee to revise those bylaws, get input from council, from the commissioners, to make sure that everyone has some proper input and anything you do in those bylaws are viable. So I hope that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? If not, we have a motion, second on the floor for the third reading, Resolution 2245. Can we have roll call please?
Snar.
You've got a lot of roll call tonight.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Nope.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Can we have third reading, please?
A resolution appointing Joshua Ingles as the city's representative to the Clinton County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring interference.
Move to pass Resolution 2245 as read.
Second. Motion by Perd, second by Lierman for approval of Resolution 2245. Roll call please.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
No.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes. And?
I put this as second upon the reading. No, on the first to have it read. You're the second.
Sorry.
It's not your fault.
Oh. Let's just say it is. Okay, that's all I have under my agenda. Mayor, stand forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to start out very sad, knowing that we lost a very good citizen in this honor. He could have died for it and turned it in for one of the nicest stuffs. I actually got my wife and she wanted to go back. Sad, it's just sad. But on a lighter note, that gone in, she just continues to astound me. I know you all got the report, but that blue house on Truisdale has done thorn in our side for years. And we finally got in there, got people convicted and cleaned up. And we'll see what happens to the property from here. Hopefully the heirs will turn it over to the land. Also, one on South Street, that red house, some of this stuff, I'm kind of embarrassed to say, but that was a dump when I first elected mayor. It took seven years, but it's now a beautiful lot that somebody could build on. I've got the same thing in, down here on Burt'sel. The day before his court date, the back end of the house is burnt out. And the day before his court date, he goes down there and bails the plank over the gate window, so you can't see it burnt out. But it's still burnt out. Some of these people astound me, but it stays on. A reminder on your basketball hoops, they're not supposed to be out over the curb because we got stump plows that have to go through and we don't want to be breaking the truck mirrors. So if your basketball hoop is out in the street, please drive it back in. I have some other employee announcements, too. Andrea, congratulations. She is our first deputy service director. Well, Kirby, I saw Kirby here someplace.
Yes.
Oh, he's hiding behind red. See, I told you to take a front row seat, I was going to call your name. He is the first superintendent that Sugar Grove has had since the city took him. And another well deserved promotion for him. Steve Honeycutt is now officially our wastewater superintendent. And Steve has been with the city for 23 years. He's going to do an outstanding job. And Jeff Hawke is going to be hard to beat. He's with our water department, he's a level three water plant operator. Forty-one years of service with the city of Ohio. He must have started right out of high school. You know, Nick, do you?
I think we did.
Yeah. Forty-one years, that's a rare thing for people to do. Sunday, November 6th, at 3 o'clock, Wilmington Church of Christ holds its annual veterans concert featuring United Christian Men's Choir and Lady Forte, of course, for you. On November the 8th, it's a general election, make sure you vote. They're open from 6:30 to 7:50. And of course, November 11th, Veteran Day, Veterans Day at Clinton County Veterans Memorial down on Walton Street. There'll be a remembrance ceremony held from 9:30 until 11:00. And just to reinforce the reason for the delay on completing our traffic light projects on Romback and on South Street, it's all on AES, folks. The light pole company is not getting there, they're not getting the connective made, and we can't be taking down the existing light poles and fixing the sidewalks because the new light poles have not been fulfilled. I think that's all we got, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Audrey Vance, do you have it in course?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schuyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two quick pieces of legislation. The first one is three readings on surplus property. The water department has a vehicle, like the maintenance repair department has equipment valued at more than $1,000 that we would like to dispose of on the weekends. Any council authorization to do that?
Can we have someone bring it forward, please?
Sure. I'll move to give Resolution 2247 a first reading by title only.
Second.
A motion and second for first reading Resolution 2247. All favors in. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Maybe have first reading, please?
A resolution declaring surplus property to wit water department vehicle and maintenance and repair department equipment valued at more than $1,000 and authorizing the disposition of said property.
Move to spin the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2247 a second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion by Kirkie, second by Osborne. I have a suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Maybe have second, third reading, please?
A resolution declaring surplus property to wit water department vehicle and maintenance and repair department equipment valued at more than $1,000 and authorizing the disposition of said property.
Move to pass Resolution 2247 as read.
Second.
Motion by Perd, second by Osborne for passage. Resolution 2247, roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2247 passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item is what I like to refer to as a G11 waiver. I think we've all seen this before, anytime we have collective bargaining negotiations with unions, it's something that we would like, we utilize to bargain in good faith arbitrators. If it goes past the end of the year, their hands are tied. This G11 waiver allows us to, it doesn't put us under that time crunch, we can openly negotiate, and that's what this waiver is for, and I think we've all seen this before, and it's just, it's more of a formality than anything. So, does anyone have any questions about it? I do have more detail if you want, but I know we've seen this over and over again, so.
And this is first.
This is just a vote up or down?
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
Just authorizing me to sign it.
Okay, may we have a motion for approval of this resolution, please?
Move to support the collective bargaining agreement, G11, for the young negotiators here.
Second.
Motion by Perd, second by Lierman for support of collective bargaining. All favors in by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I just wanted to piggyback on what the mayor said. Also, Adam Simpson with our water department is now the water superintendent, he's been with the city for a little over 15 years, I believe.
Right, started at the bottom, worked his way up, made, by.
So I just wanted to mention that. And then finally, you know, we are trying to tackle David's Drive in phases, and I was extremely nervous this morning, because this morning was the bid opening for the Phase 1 of David's Drive. We have about $3.2 million in funding, and based on trends and what I've seen happening across the state, I was really nervous that this could come at like four or five million for Phase 1, which was making me sick to my stomach. It came in just a little over three, the low bid, the apparent low bid, it's just a little over three. So it looks like we're in good shape. It's a contractor that has done a lot of work in the city before, we had three bids. Fillmore Construction was the apparent low bid, a little over $3 million. So it looks like we have the funding in place, it looks like this is definitely going to happen next year, Phase 1 of David's Drive. So I was really happy about that, because a couple of weeks ago, we opened up our bids on the cemetery bridge, and they were way higher than what I was expecting. I was hoping for somewhere between $100,000 to $200,000 on the cemetery bridge. We had three bids, the low bid was $105,000 on the cemetery bridge, so we're like back to square one on that one. Just so everybody knows, we got the drawing board. I'm going to reach out to the county engineer for advice and maybe get some help with, you know, working with the county, because they do this type of stuff all the time. The $405,000 is not sustainable for the cemetery, it's just not. So that's on hold right now, but the dividend is, David's Drive looks, it's full speed ahead on Phase 1, so.
It seems like Fillmore's been a very reputable company of working with us in the city, too.
Yeah, they're doing a wall break project right now, and no complaints.
Phase 1 starts at the 134.
Yeah, and it goes to, what, just south of the Christian Academy is where I think it turns.
Yeah, I know where that shelter is. But we stopped where Lyo Creek comes.
The green space, yeah.
Yeah.
The green space.
The green space, yeah.
So it'll be short of the shelter, of the passage.
Yes. Any other questions? All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Schuyer. Council Committee reports city revitalization, Mr. McKay, on this, and what else, Devin?
There's no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. City Services Committee, Mr. Eagle.
The legislation, Mr. President, I will advise council that, two things. Number one, Councilman Kirkie brought up at the last meeting that some of the citizens along Main Street complain that people disobey the speed limit, and so we're in the process of trying to set up a committee meeting to discuss what we can do about that situation, and unfortunately, Councilman McKay is on it, he's out tapped, so. Says he gets back while we get the committee together for that. And then also, it brought to my attention that the handicap ramps at the courthouse, on courthouse square, are very difficult to access, and if you're parked in the middle of the block, you gotta go halfway to the corner, and then they're on in the bump out. So several people have asked, might be, take a look at that, we'll also put that on our agenda. Andrea? Take a step.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items. Our first item is ordinance 2254, some supplemental appropriations. There's six of them. They were covered extensively in the specialty, looking at the budget with council. I didn't know if there are any additional questions, since the council has any of those six items.
There's a lot of money there, but we take it through.
Yeah. All right, well, I move to give the first reading on ordinance 2254. 2254 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Albright, seconded by Snar. First reading, ordinance 2254. All favors in by this, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
The suspended rules regulations give ordinance 2254 second reading by title only.
Second.
Motion by Albright, seconded by Snar. Suspension of rules, roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Second, third reading, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I'm going to pass ordinance 2254 as read.
Second.
Motion second for passage, roll call, please.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
And Albright?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 2254 passes.
And our second item was for miscellaneous transfers, there were five of those. The personal ones from other services and supplies, $2,300, and some capital improvements in the facility of maintenance for $9,198. The Millbury Street project was $10,000, and some building improvements as well. Prevention salary line. Those were also discussed extensively at the meeting right before this, but if there's any additional questions, anyone has pertaining to those miscellaneous transfers? All right, I'm going to give the first reading only on ordinance 2255 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Albright, seconded by Osborne. First reading, ordinance 2255. All favors in by this, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
The suspended rules regulations give ordinance 2255 second, third reading by title only.
Second.
A motion, second for suspension of rules, roll call, please.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Maybe we have second, third reading, please.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
I'm going to pass ordinance 2255 as read.
Second.
Motion second for passage, ordinance 2255. Roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 2255 passes.
That's all we have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We do have one piece of legislation tonight. Two weeks ago, at our committee meeting, we had a discussion of a topic that had been brought to us from the City Planning Commission regarding short-term rentals. And when we rezoned the city several years ago, the, there were only two, I believe, two zoning codes that were allowed to have short-term rentals, and we're speaking of Airbnb, those types of things. And, you know, been doing some research about it, there was a request for kind of some balance. So the, the city planning commission had recommended to council that we just change the zoning code so that those are permitted anywhere in the city. I mean, they don't go into the business, but anywhere there's a mixed use or residential zone, there would, it would be a permitted use instead of conditional use, which is what it was. So we kind of gave everybody the same opportunity if they wanted to have an Airbnb or something along this line. So we had a pretty thorough discussion about it, but I'm happy to open it up to the floor to kind of discuss here. I know Andrea, we picked on Andrea last night, but she was at the City Planning Commission meeting, too, so I know that she can help answer some questions if they're running from there. But if you look through the legislation, you can see the two tables where it shows the two different sections where it shows the change in usage, so, from the Cs that are struck through or the conditionals that would now be considered P for principal use, so. Are there questions? One of the topics we did bring up is, there was a fair amount of discussion about, you know, owner occupied housing. You know, obviously, I don't think it would be great for every house in the neighborhood to be an Airbnb, but we have not seen that yet so far. I think we were talking about short-term rentals in the city, I believe we were around 25 of them altogether, so. And a few of those frankly were outside of the areas that they're, you know, they're conditional use for that humidity. So another reason we wanted to modify this code, to make those illegal technically. So any other questions or anything we want to discuss about it?
Is there any discussion about the fact that it's probably making it more difficult to have housing for people of Wilmington?
So we did discuss the owner occupancy side of that, which I think, and I'll let you speak to it if you want, but the idea is, traditionally, the argument I've heard is that if you have a house that you can't rent, or you, rather than selling it and putting it back into the market for someone in the community to purchase, turning it into an Airbnb, which can be a profitable business model, if it always is, but can only make some of the housing stop. So we talked about it more from the owner occupancy side, but I am aware of the concept you brought in. And what we kind of landed on in our discussion was the idea that at any point, council can revisit. There's a permit, an application process that they have to go through. So essentially, we're making a few properties that are outside of the current zone use come into, you know, into alignment with the zoning then, but we still have the ability. come into, you know, into alignment with the zoning then, but we still have the ability to revisit it. If you saw fifty applications come through, and we discussed in committee that that might be something we want to look at, but currently, there's no process whatsoever. So instituting an application or permitting process is a good way for us to track it and see those changes in real time. But I hesitate to try to take, you know, a property owner's ability to make some money on their property away, especially if it's a really limited use, so.
And that's where I end up, it's just, you know, sort of regretful.
Yeah. Yep, I've seen the, I've seen, well, the, to that end, the bulk of where permitted use covers a fair amount, every bit of downtown, and a fair amount of the transitional neighborhoods around downtown, so. But yeah, I've seen those conversations before, that is kind of the fulcrum of that conversation is, you know, it always comes down to property rights versus, you know, regulations. So at this point, you know, my, what we took away from the committee was that by instituting the, you know, the permit process or the application process, it still gives the city a way to track and see how many of them are in use. If we felt we needed to do something later, so we never lose that rate. So any other discussion? Andrew, did I miss anything? Jermaine, did I miss a conversation that I left out?
I cannot think of a thing.
Okay. If there's no additional discussion, I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 2256 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perkin, seconded by Albright, first reading ordinance 2256. All favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code of Wilmington, five ordinances.
Thank you, ask for the second reading in our next meeting, please. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkin. Public work, surprise, Mr. Star.
Yes, I don't get to do this very often, but we've got good news tonight, and I'm gonna let someone else share. Go ahead.
Thank you.
This is a big day, this is really a game changer for all of the cities and the citizens. This one is before you allow us to enter a partnership with Grand County. Behind that OG project would not happen without this partnership. They need us, we've needed them for a long time. Grand County, in here, Steve Booby and folks, Brian and I, this summer about this opportunity, and believe it's three of us, almost immediately, came to rethink how this would work. The team of Grand County is made over this. For the means that we had in the treaty of the exorbitant area, that it's done a lot of these types of contracts, make sure that we're fully protected in the contract, and I think we've accomplished that. The contract gives Grand County the right to up the, to take up the four foot five, three down the Dale water, personally feed the water, promises to be late. They expect to start taking about two million a day, by around the first of 2025. As you probably know, we usually have two billion gallons a day. And, and of course, we've been paying for seven billions gallons a day since the contract was pretty good. The contract will be around, pretty good, in 2021. And of course, if there's one world, what's the killer, or Grand County way, we can reopen the contract, we'll be around to get more water. There's pretty tight three gallons a day available for water supply in the, see the free bed of water. So this contract requires Grand County to pay us one point two million dollars upfront to help cover our some costs of the, what we spent on building up and changing it all these years. They will pay all the costs to upgrade the pump station and intake structure and early up to water to them, and ensure we're still getting all the water we need. A lot of that work that they'll be covering is rehab type work that we would have been on the hook for in the next couple of years anyway. Let's use. That, I mean, that's a organism of Jesus, obviously, I'll be investing into that solely. They will share in the operator maintenance, major repair costs that we get billed on from the record, through the N R. They will pay proportion to the water they use. So we use that, we use that, we have laid the water, they'll be there on that. They will also show the, our render, operating costs over there, the utilities, the labor, parts, equipment, repairs, whatever, we will shed those, also based on proportion of use. And then, as you go forward, if you do need to expand more, or either, if we're moving in a direction, they would, they would shed those costs. If we had just pretty old things, contract would be another, and would be hard up the cost, they have to cover the whole increase. And of course, they'll pay to the water. So, um, I could keep on hatin' through this situation.
Brown's one, huh?
Yeah, so, but I had, you know, that was fun, yeah, that was, that was strong, you know, the case. Didn't see that part coming.
You're having a great time, aren't you?
So, any questions about any of it? I can telephone any time.
Just one comment, then, I guess it's filled with comments, I guess. First of all, that's an extraordinary contract, it's very favorable to the city. I gotta congratulate the administration for putting this deal together. And I didn't have much time to go through this contract, but there's only one issue concerning me, and it's very minor. Section 4.5 where it incorporates the, the following is a list of operation and maintenance costs examples that will be shared, but it's not necessarily a complete list. And it lists as a shared cost the chemical additions to treat the water that goes to Grand County. Is there any way to get us all that? Because it's, the treatment is for them, it's not for us.
Not by the cost, but that will be, will be the smallest cost of this whole thing.
I think so.
The treatment will be enough to call a treatment.
That's all I can say, that is.
Right, that will be pretty today.
So I know you all are excited to know that Jonathan McKay is watching us tonight. He's got nothing else better to do. And he wants to thank Rick personally for his role in this.
Thank you, James.
Yep, next to use, one of our former council colleagues, Freddie, David Hockney, looking to the crystal wall.
Right.
Could we have imagined this back in 1990 when we entered into this contract?
Yes, we did.
Verbiage looking to the crystal.
Actually, we did.
Well, you gotta remember, back then, we were still pumping ten million gallons a day, but when Cristico was taking a million of it. Exactly. Airborne was at, around twelve hundred and fifty employees at the time, eventually went to ten thousand. And that's really one of the reasons we got the water, was promising the job.
That was the big reason why, that was the big book.
And ODNR said, we're gonna give you the water, and we want one straw in the drink. There's only gonna be one intake structure out there in Wilmington, if you want it, you're gonna do it. But you gotta buy seven million gallons a day, which we thought, no problem, we're, we're gonna be fine. We've got all this growth going on, and lo and behold, what, twenty-five years later? We can have whatever water we can use.
Finally, you are done.
Add inflow, add inflow.
But we're there now, congratulations to everybody.
Any questions, other additional? Well, thanks again, Rick, great. So I've moved to give the first reading only of ordinance 2257 by title only.
Second.
Motion, and second, first reading ordinance 2257, all favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a water supply agreement on behalf of the city of Wilmington with eight county commissioners and declaring an emergency.
I move to spend the rules and regulations, give ordinance 2257, second third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of rules, roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkin?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
All favor, may we have second third reading, please?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a water supply agreement on behalf of the city of Wilmington, eight county commissioners, and declaring an emergency.
I moved to pass the ordinance as read.
Second.
Motion second for passage, ordinance 2257, roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkin?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance 2257 passed.
What happened, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Snar. Alright, we have the income tax for October 2022 in your packet, pleasure, pleasure.
Who would be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion second for acceptance of the October 2022 income bracket report, all favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Report is accepted as presented. Alright, we'll now open the council meeting to the public. Anyone that wishes to address the council, a lot of folks here tonight, I know that several of you may want to speak, we welcome that, but hope that you'll try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. So we'd like to go first, please come forward and just stand in the area here. We'll name that as.
Tracy Hopkins, seven eight zero West Truesaw Street. There's been a lot of discussion about the streets and the changes in the streets, and I'm not here to ask about Ron Becker or catch that. But I do have a question about a left-hand turn that I was surprised to see just a couple of weeks ago. I hadn't heard any discussion about it, then or since or before. And I was going home, a typical route that I travel, and I noticed at the intersection of 68 and Chippewa Tree, you can no longer turn left to head south on 68. I found that curious because the fire department is located in that block. And I wondered what the input was from the fire chief, traffic studies and such like that, that restricts a left-hand turn on South 68 now. You can only travel straight to the Chippewa Tree corridor or north on 68. In addition, Chippewa Tree corridor is usually closed for events now. So I'm just wondering if anybody can speak to that.
So I thought the same thing, because there, there is no sign saying that you can turn left. So I asked the engineer that, I said, are left turns permitted there? They are permitted.
But the sign distinctly shows this.
I know.
So anybody who's driving is going to interpret like myself.
Right.
This is not allowed, and we are going to get ticketed.
Yeah, it's not prohibited.
So if it's not prohibited.
It's not.
Can someone, safety director, council, whoever makes the decision, remove that sign? So it eliminates the confusion.
I actually asked the same question, because I was confused too.
So who, who makes the decision on that?
The engineers are the ones that said they're not prohibited. Left turns are not prohibited there, even though the sign shows what you just described. They are not prohibited. But I'll get with the engineer again and see if there's a better way to assign that, because I agree with you, I thought it was confusing as well. So yeah, I'll be with the mayor. Yeah?
Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to speak tonight? Who are you all?
I'm with.
Yes, sir.
Jamie Knowles, five five zero Brook Boulevard. I think most people in here would agree that perception is reality, except I think the perception of what I stated at the last council meeting about the fear that I believe a lot of us in, in this community have for the vagrants and homeless was not portrayed in this perception of these minutes. It basically stated, I got up and said I was afraid of living in my neighborhood. That is not what I said at all. I distinctly remember saying, we as a council and a community need to figure out a good way to take care of this homeless and veteran situation that we currently have in Wilmington. It's near and dear my heart. I'm one of the founding, belong to one founding families of not only Clinton County, but Wilmington. My family, his name is all over this county, hospitals, streets, roads. And it really, really tears me up to watch this go on. I travel this community every day, two and three times a day, from one end of town to another end of town. I made a comment to the mayor about part of that after the meeting that I'm not gonna get into tonight. But if you travel from the old post office to what used to be College Shell, what, I can't even think what it is now, but just above the railroad tracks at U D F, you will find all kinds of garbage. You will dodge all kinds of the backpack and bicycle parade per day, or at least that's what I call them. Have no idea where they're coming from, have no idea why they're here. But we've got a lot of, they're causing traffic problems. I know of people that have literally had to stop on the tracks at U D F, honk their horn because they're standing in the middle of the road, won't move. And because they honked their horn, now they get their hood smacked, they get cursed, they get spit at. This is a problem. It's not that I'm afraid to live in my neighborhood, it's that all of us should care about our community enough to get together and figure out what the next steps are to help these people and help our community. You know, we're condemning houses. I'm glad that something is happening, but we're, we're having a, that creates a bigger problem. By condemning these homes, because nobody, we just turn a blind eye, yes, to the community, to these people. What are we doing to our city? And to be able to do all this that these people are doing up here, which they're doing a good, they're doing right by passing these, these, these things to get the budget. But if we're, if we're devaluing our property by condemning these homes and not taking care of the people that are causing a lot of this problem, where's our budget gonna come from? I mean, our property taxes, our property values are going down, so we need property taxes are going down. We need to figure this out. We need to figure this out yesterday. You know, we've got four general dollar stores, four dollar stores. What keeps attracting businesses like that? Why does Washington Courthouse have such a beautiful farm in the town? And just growth and growth and growth. You look at other counties with cities our size, and they continue to grow. Ours is not. We're getting dollar stores. We are attracting dollar stores because we're attracting these types of people. We got to figure this out. Thank you.
Hopefully, we can get your comments.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure, because I think people, I, I hope people didn't misunderstand me last time.
Thank you.
That was a lot of it.
Yes, sir, anyone else? Anyone else please to state? If not, yes ma'am.
Tracey Thompson, I'm in on this. On 64 East Lopez Street, I hadn't planned to step up.
You'll be just fine.
But I wanted to state that I agree with the comments that Jamie mentioned. I think there's several other people that are here for the same reason. I live downtown, I love my town, sorry. Born and raised here. We chose, six years ago, moved downtown, we've owned the property since 2001. We're very proud of our property. I typically get trash blown in, and if you wait till the next day, it blows down to the next floor, and I get in the bag. Lately, I'm getting intentional. Lately, I'm getting intentional littering. We've had break-ins. We've had things stolen out of our backyard, which is fenced. We put up four lights outside to discourage vagrancy. Outside my garage door on Lincoln Street, we had a problem which triggered the lights. Then someone, on a regular basis, stood outside my garage door, smoked, put their butts on the ground. That pile kept growing, so I knew it was a regular thing. So we installed lights to discourage it. We've also had issues at the church across the street, and they've done the same thing, added lighting. We, as property owners, are having to do something about this. And our security system has been upgraded. We've moved cameras outside that we used to use for our store. It's a problem. In the last two years, it has increased in this. I don't know the solution, I just want you to be aware. For that, a lifetime member of this community, this is the first time ever I've ever spoken to the council. This is the first time I have finally been pushed to speak up. And thank you for your time.
You did just fine. Thanks, ma'am. Anyone else?
Michael, I wonder if I could pick on you for a second. I remember I got an email really early this morning from a gentleman who was concerned about kind of next steps for city council. And Michael had responded. I would wonder if you would mind to kind of update everybody on the coalition's next steps for whatever.
Yeah, and I think several people in here know this, I made sure they were the first to know. The Clinton County Coalition for Homelessness will present its public results, or its results from its study on November thirtieth at six P. M. in the lawyer room in this building. It's a coalition that was created with money from the city and the county to create a coalition, hire an outside consultant, and ask him to help lead us through problem solving, figuring out what needs to be done. Tell you one big thing will be, you know, lack of affordable housing. But there'll be several other examples of what some of the agencies in town are. One of the big things also is cooperation among organizations, nonprofits, trying to get people where they need to go. Or counseling for drugs, or counseling for mental health issues. Because I think if we're going to climb out of this, one thing to try to do is get people where they need to go for help.
What time did you say it would be?
Six P. M.
Does anybody know what tracks in here? Because I spoke to three of them, all three of them wanting to put them stay in the line. And then just a rush to be moved.
Maybe, yeah. There are lots of different opinions about it.
Just met a guy today.
It seems to be like all of a sudden. Like over the past seventeen, eighteen years. I don't know if this is, because I didn't, I mean, I wouldn't relocate, I didn't hire state.
With regard to his question, is that part of the coalition study as what brings them here?
I don't believe so. It's more about what to do with the homeless population here and those that need help.
I agree with that part, but I think you do need to find out why they're coming.
That population is growing.
Yes. Because I'm a person who tends to recognize faces, and I am seeing constantly new faces that I have never seen before. And I see them at different stages of homelessness.
Sounds like a good thing.
They come, they're new, and then they gradually decline.
I'd rather not have a lot of comments from the audience. If you, I mean, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
I apologize.
And we will, you know, be happy to hear you. But it kind of gets out of control when you start speaking without being recognized. Thank you very much, Michael. I believe that's going to be a good meeting. Was there someone else?
Can I say just one more thing? I'll be happy to. And this is nothing against anybody, it's really a question for Michael and the coalition. You know, you read a lot. You do the same thing I do. I pay attention to faces. You know, my dad was in law work. I was taught to pay attention to my surrounding faces, and what's familiar and what's not. So my question is, I agree we need coalition. I'm wondering what all they've done and are doing, or I'm willing to do. But I continually see like that, tons of new faces. And have no problem with taking care of people that need to be taken care of, that are trying to help themselves. I do have a problem with taking care of, not being able to take care of our own first. And I think that's what we need to try to do, is take care of our own first, and then worry about, is there anything left of somebody else? You know, if you're not from here, can we figure out a way to get money to get them back to where they came from?
I will say that Sugar Tree does spend hundreds of dollars a year sending people back home. I think we need a study, somehow.
Yeah, it's not a legal study.
Difficult to carry out. I know there are some from out of town, and even out of state, and I know that there have been some that have been dropped off by other law enforcement agencies, and I think the American police have responded to that. It just seems sort of mind-boggling that people would come from out of state for mac and cheese at Sugar Tree once a day. And they're not going to get much else in this community unless they check themselves into health counseling, and there's not much housing for them. So they're going to have very much difficulty getting housing. So it's just sort of neither that they would find a place out in the woods, possibly come in for one meal a day. Like, there aren't many more services other than that for someone like that.
I just, you know, I just continually see, of course, it's all hearsay, but I continually see that, you know, people are traveling these tent camps, or homeless camps, whatever you want to call them, and in doing so, they don't find anybody from Clinton County. But they all have a cell phone from the guy that passed down the three cell phones down at the old phone company. And they're all texting each other, hey, come to Wilmington. You know, they're buddies, and this and that, and this one knows that one. I have no idea why, but other than maybe they think this is a rich environment, this is our theme, I don't know. I mean, there's got to be something.
Thanks, Jamie.
So, but anyway.
I've got somebody behind you that wants to speak first, that you've governed.
Scott Ellis, three two three Hyatt Avenue here in Wilmington. I went to high school with Jamie, so I've been in the community about the same amount of time. I have four commercial properties in town. I have fifteen rental units on the corner of North Walnut and Columbus Street. And I also have the old customer contact branch shop out on Wayne Road, that's my business as well. I've been here a long time. I've worked very hard in my rental properties to curtail any drug use or any tenants I would have that would cause problems in the community. With that said, I have a very good group of tenants now. They all have jobs, work in the community, contribute to the community. But we continue to have problems downtown, as Jamie says, with people coming into my buildings at night. I've had to eliminate all the external outlets within my buildings, because they will be in there camped out, charging their cell phone. Also, any doors, any of my laundry doors that go in that basements, I'll have to have, I'll have to have key locks, or they will be sleeping in my basements. And one thing I see, I don't know if we've really enabled law enforcement to do anything about this. You know, there's really seems to be, their hands seems to be tied on what they can do when these people are found sleeping in my basement or just trespassing on my property. So, I mean, they run them off, but they come back the next day. I understand they can't be there all the time, but it is a problem. My building on Wayne Road was broken into about a year ago. Cost three thousand dollars worth of damage just to get into that building. They stole quite a bit of property, and today I still haven't got any evidence back on, or any report back on the evidence that was collected from that scene. So to me, that explains, we can commit a crime, and there's no penalty for us committing that crime. And, you know, does that invite more of these people into the community? If we don't have stricter laws or regulations? I mean, I don't understand why somebody needs to be riding a bike around Wilmington at two A. M. in the morning. Or in the middle of the day, with a little cart behind it, to where they go around and pick up things off people's porches or off their business. I call people on my cameras doing that, picking things up off my property. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Yes, sir.
Tony Thomas, two oh four Fisher Street in Wilmington. I've said one question as far as the coalition goes. Have you, as far as the study goes, are they comparing, making a comparative contrast with the spike in drug use along with the spike in homeless, homelessness? Because I've noticed, I mean, most of the homeless people that I see, they're obvious addicts.
Yeah, I don't think it's a study or anything like that.
Would that be not a good idea? Because what they're also bringing in is drugs, because if you've got people who need food, or they're all going to congregate where the free food is, but then when you've got all the addicts there, well, all the dealers know this as a marketing tool, hey, they're all there. Well, then you've got a spike in drug use as well. I remember growing up here as a kid, hung out with Miss Cars' kids. I remember when we'd hunt sirens, it was the first thing in your week, might be one month. We'd run to it. Now it's every five minutes. That's what it seems like. And is somebody going to get revived for the sixth or seventh time? And I'm sure the guy's hands is tied too, but I think that might be something that you might put into the study with the vagrancy, hey, or the addiction of something. Because I can guarantee you, the spike in drug use, with the influx of the homelessness, would probably match.
I think this would be a big question for the consultant.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay. That concludes the open to the public session and council. We do have executive session. Yes, sir.
You know, I got an email, and probably a lot of you will see it too on social media, about the number of homeless camps around Wilmington. And what can be done about the homeless camps? And I've been, I've been trying to, you know, as a councilperson, you can't really pass any laws that are any different from what we have on the books right now. But what could we do? Well, I was looking at Anna's report on code enforcement. And Anna is doing a remarkable job here for the City of Wilmington. And one of the things that is part of her job is that when she finds one of these properties, she's got to go out and find out who actually owns that property and then deal with them. I kept thinking, would it be, and may I just throw this out, maybe it's good, maybe it's not, I don't know. Would it be possible for Anna to find out? We know the locations of these homeless camps. Could she contact the owners of those properties and say, if we find trespassers, will you prosecute them? Will you file charges? Now, I don't know whether you can do that or not. Maybe the chief can answer that question, or a law director, but, you know, if we start prosecuting for trespassing charges, maybe they'll, maybe they'll solve some of the homeless camp problems, don't know.
Councilman Ebel and I can speak on that. We have done that, because if it's not your property, we can trespass. Once again, there has to be some type of signage up there, though, for us to legally do that. Or they have to have been told before or warned before. Once again, I think I said this before, it comes down to, again, judicial authority or accountability. A criminal trespass is a misdemeanor to fourth degree, and most they'd be sentenced to a thirty-day sentence. So, once again, we just have to, you know, thirty days, and they're back out, where they're going to go again. And that's where we have to get these, we have to get everybody together. We have to, we have to work together to get housing for these people. There's thirty days in jail, they're right back out. They got, they got a hold of thirty days, they're back out.
That's three houses, that's more than they're getting now.
Which isn't much of a deterrent at all.
Correct.
I have something to say. I reported in.
Could you come up?
Sure. Jamie Jones, thirty-five, thirty-seven Southeast Room. I called into the police just on, I do believe it was on the first. Found a homeless camp along the railroad track where Langdon Avenue, you know, runs with the railroad track. We have a very long, probably forty yards long homeless camp there. And I reported in, I had Officer Eisen and Officer Patrick on the call. They documented, they did a great job. Officer Eisen came in, found some, like, stolen vacuum cleaner, ran the serial number, did his job right. However, I'm not aware of how you would measure the railroad track. I'm sure there's so many feet on each side of the railroad track that belongs to the railroad. There, there, thank you, I couldn't think of the word. We need to, I think, one, you guys can reach out to the railroad. You can come right on through, and if you're up high, you're going to see all these camps as you're coming down. We just had a big, ginormous camp taken out right behind the post office. I was there on that. The county, it took eight dump truck loads, tandem asshole, to get all the debris out of there. Looks great. County did a phenomenal job cleaning that up. However, you know, you can go down the railroad, and I have walked the side of the railroad from UDF all the way up, and it's just camp after camp after camp. It could be a small camp, or it could be a large camp. And I'm documenting on a map with help from my group of all these camps. Some of these camps are being cleaned up very well with Anna's help, but they're coming right back. I mean, just soon as it's cleaned up, they're coming back. It's actually, they almost walk them in, because we've just cleaned up all their mess, now they got a fresh slate again. So it's something you guys can look at, check out with the railroad company if they can't come through, and say, hey, can you report these in for us? I know it's not your job, but, you know, it does, it's a higher perspective than probably is going to bring in a different look. Just a thought.
Thank you.
It's on the railroad track, you know, the railroad, have to say we're trespassing up?
And I will tell you right now, a lot of times when we contact the railroad, they won't even contact us back.
And just so you know, if there is a huge sign there on the railroad, right where there's a mattress, it is the railroad, says no trespassing. So it doesn't matter how big the signs.
I can charge them, getting the victim, somebody, a representative from the railroad to come to court saying, yes, I'm the victim, that's where we have an issue. We don't have a solution.
Well, that's something that we should probably address, council.
The ultimate hope would be that they would just plead to it, but if they were not wily enough, but ultimately if it went to trial, we wouldn't have a representative to say they were trespassing on their property. We could have the police there to witness it, but they can't, they're not, they don't have the, I guess, the standing to actually testify to the being in violation. Someone has to be there to say that, so this is a big issue, especially what you're talking about with train tracks.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be nice to somehow, we have somebody maybe at the state level, you know, because this is a big, big company that finds us not worth their time, or to bring somebody down is my understanding. Because I think, well, your train tracks is a bad place.
Oh, it is.
And, but we, like, he's correct, though. Until we get somebody from that, I mean, which company is it that has the tracks around here?
It's not CSX anymore.
It's I worry, Indiana, Indiana, Ohio Rail.
Yeah, but we need to find somebody that are corporate, I mean.
I mean, I can reach out and see if I can get a, maybe a letterhead from an individual, say, hey, this is the problem we're having. I just need a representative with a letter saying, hey, I'm the one to contact for trespassing. If they give me the authority to do that.
Not the one to come to court, too.
Correct, that's the thing, they would have to come to court. Once you have to listen to the fourth degree, thirty to sixty days, they're going to be back out, they're probably dealing with it again.
Yeah, we just don't manage them.
I mean, it's just a matter of time, people leave, people hit the trains, because they're still whipped out, they're burning.
Is there somebody else who wants to address the council?
That's why I think the coalition that Councilman Star is talking about could help with that. We're just trying to ban them, let's not ban them.
All right, let's, we're getting a little out of hand here again. I think, did you want to say something, ma'am?
No.
Okay. Just asking, you're welcome. You always got something to say. Anybody else? If not, we'll call this discussion to a close, and we're going to be moving into executive session. So, Ash Gole, Lee, and we'll move forward with that. I think we're asking Brad Ryan, Mary Kay, Mayor, and Brad to stay with us.
That's what we have.
Brad.
Albright.
Oh, good.
Eblin.
Yes.